We are ready to go into public testimony. So, the rules for public testimony are on the screen, and I would ask that speakers are respectful of these rules. I would note that the board does not take public comments on items related to personnel or individually named staff. I would also like to note that each speaker has a two-minute speaking time. It's not very long, so you have to be pretty concise. When the two minutes have ended, please conclude your remarks. Ms. Ritchie will read off the testimony speakers. Thank you.
Felicia Bazee, Melissa Westbrook, and Chris Jackins.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. Thanks for having me here tonight. My name is Felicia Bazee, and I am the ASG president at Garfield High School. I join you all here today to plead our case of concerns. One of our deepest concerns is funding for our school. The reason we're really concerned about funding is because insufficient funding is causing so many divisions within the walls of our high school. Our APP classes are predominantly Caucasians, and those students have been tracked that way for the time, from the time they were in elementary or middle school. Yes, testing into APP is available to all students, and for those students who do not test in, they are able to appeal by private assessment, but those who struggle financially do not have such resources. We are going through a time that students who are not academically privileged are struggling in every single classrooms at our school and cannot act and do not have access to the Honors and APP track. In the midst of these days, Garfield is deeply impacted by racial issues, and more integrated classes will lead to not only better academic results, but diverse friendships and better understanding as well. When we walk into the building, you can see the impact that these racial issues have on our student body. It is disheartening as a student to see this going on. I believe if we have sufficient funding, we would be able to provide resources to help our students that are struggling. We live in a country that's advancing every year, and high schools are expected to produce students who are ready to take on the real world. Access for all to academic support and technology is critical for our success. Even if you fill a single class, high schools do not have the resources to provide credit retrieval in order for students to graduate. I believe that the school board not only needs to start retrieval in order for students to graduate, the school board needs to start thinking about how to fund the basic core, but they need to go beyond that and provide rich classes and electives in which students are engaged because they are motivated by this subject. We ask that the board look at every possible way to channel as much money into programs that dismantle structural racism and support all our hard-working students to help them succeed. This is what I, the students, and administrator feel is best for our school, our community, and our society. Thank you.
Good evening. Several points tonight. I am hoping the board will look at what was voted on by the previous board in regards to Lipton Springs K-8. It was to have a full complement of classrooms at the new middle school to support growth. Otherwise, it looks like staff is trying to create failure for that program and cost the district a lot of money by running a small 150-student school. The budget. Much to my surprise, I've been told by communications that if I want to report on the breakdown of the budget deficit, I have to file a public disclosure request. The district is saying it's in dire straits and yet will not provide the transparency as to why. Number three, the superintendent's contract raised. There was no link to this item when I checked this morning. The link only came up this afternoon, but that is too late under posting rules. The public must have the opportunity to examine items the board will be voting on. The link says that the two members of the board are recommending a COLA increase for the superintendent of 1.8%. His base salary is $289,878.75. Under community engagement, it says not applicable. It says there was research done on salaries from other superintendents, yet none of that data is attached to the bar. If this is about him walking, let him. We have the capable Steve Nielsen in second-in-command. I cannot believe anyone can with a straight face and that kind of salary believe that you will have any support from the public or parents when you come and say that big cuts must be made to schools and their personnel. To say I am aghast and disillusioned is putting it mildly.
My name is Chris Jackins, Box 84063, Seattle 98124. On the contract with the superintendent, the superintendent has pursued outside consulting contracts while employed by the district. Are the value and nature of such contracts publicly reported? On the student assignment plan, three points. Number one, the district should reopen Indian Heritage School, which had native education as its central focus. Number two, Lipton Springs has some native elements, but it is not such a school. To become such a school would amount to closing the original alternative school, which would be wrong. Number three, the district should keep these issues in mind when placing schools at new sites. On the contract, two Basseti architects for BEX-5 capital levy planning, three points. Number one, the principal architect of this firm, while he was chair of the city landmarks board, once gave the district landmarks advice for a school project while employed by the district on the same project. Number two, does this firm have any qualms about the district's request to be exempt from all city landmarks regulations? Number three, should the district pay for landmarks expertise if the district plans to be exempted from landmarks regulations? Please vote no in this contract. On amending policy 4237, three points. Number one, this action would increase commercial advertising at public schools. Number two, until board policies were reversed five years ago, such advertising was prohibited. Number three, please don't sell commercial access to public school students. Please vote no. Thank you.
Betsy Klebenoff Hills, Madeline Stavely, Sage Enright.
Thank you for allowing me to speak today. My name is Betsy Klebenoff Hills. I'm the mother of Jack, a seventh grader currently enrolled in the HCC program at Hamilton. I'm here representing 112 classmates, 72 of which are HCC kids, in the cohort being geo-split to the New Eagle Staff School. My purpose is to urge you to support and vote in favor of the amendment to the assignment plan allowing grandfathering eighth graders. Grandfathering is the right thing to do because it ensures the well-being of these kids by allowing them to remain in a well-established and thriving program with their friends. They want to finish what they started. According to the principal at the New Eagle Staff School, she is committed to "the fidelity of HCC," but it is unclear how and what programs will actually be able to be provided. HCC is protected under Washington state law, and it would be horribly unfair and stressful for my son and his friends to be sent to a school where they may or may not have programs all the while knowing his friends back at Hamilton that they started with are getting what they need. Unfortunately, this is an all-too-realistic scenario because of the enormous budget crisis emailed out by the superintendent last week, and we know, we all know, opening a new school requires an enormous amount of logistics, decisions, resources, and money. It's a huge task with lots of stakeholders. Unfortunately, those stakeholders are our kids. I propose seeing grandfather as a positive option because it's an opportunity to consolidate resources, reduce risk, and ensure equity. You already have the programs in place at Hamilton, so there's no reason to reinvent the wheel, and the kids are guaranteed to be provided the best education you can provide without additional resources. Therefore, I ask you to see grandfathering as a positive solution that enables you to cross the needs of these kids off your enormous to-do list. It's a solution and no longer another issue needing to be resolved. Further, it gives the principal a year to plan and establish a great program for her rising seventh graders. Grandfathering allows you to take comfort in the fact that you have followed your strategic plan, providing the best equitable education possible. Thank you.
I'm just gonna leave that. My name is Madeline Stavely, and I've been a teacher at Lipton Springs for the last 15 years. Until this year, I have always taught a multi-grade class. This was not by choice. This is what we had to do, given our staffing numbers from the school district. We have been assigned seven rooms at the New Eagle Staff building, so I'm guessing staff envision continuing the multi-grade trend that they have kind of set our school on. Multi-grades are problematic for two main reasons. First, you end up with a huge range of ability in one classroom. My classroom last year was a very typical example. Of the 25 students, 64% were below grade level in reading, 4% were at grade level, and 32% were above grade level. For the kids who are struggling readers and writers, it's more effective to have clear learning targets that all students are working on throughout the day. With multi-grade, they would hear the third-grade targets, then the fourth-grade targets, then the fourth-grade challenge targets. It gets too wordy and too confusing, and this is just the dilemma with reading. I'm not talking about math or science or social studies. Secondly, it's very challenging to plan for two grades, two sets of standards, two separate curriculums for each subject in a way that's meaningful for kids, especially with a significant number needing remedial instruction in reading and literacy and math. There's not time to cover both grade levels in one year, so you end up with less depth and breadth when covering content. Well, things are different this year. We have mitigation funding, so the first time K-6 is in a single-grade level classroom. I mean, single-grade levels. And one thing we could do right away is double our instruction time in math. I teach third-grade math in the morning and then again in the afternoon. When we have our additional class, they're all third graders. I'm aware of who, you know, what happened in the morning and who needs extra help in the afternoon. During my planning time and lunch, I can prep so that all kids get targeted instruction twice a day, and this is just the benefit in math. Please help us continue our work of closing the achievement gap for Native American and non-Native learners. We really would appreciate 14 rooms at the Robert Eagle Staff building. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Sage Enright, and I'm a student at Garfield High School and alum at Pinehurst K-8, or now known as Lipton Springs. School hasn't always been easy for me. In the fourth grade, I was not able to read, and quickly I rose to academic success through the help of Lipton Springs and the one-on-one attention you get at Lipton Springs, even through continuous threats of the closure of the school. The unique inclusive philosophy of social justice and the social mindfulness at Lipton Springs really created a supportive environment that made, that really made me feel that I mattered and that increased my academic success greatly. I am now, as I said, a Garfield student, and I am also a Running Start student at Seattle Central Colleges, so I'm taking college courses, making me ahead of other high school students. This school needs to be placed in a building in Lipton Springs neighborhood because the Native American cultural ties with the school. It needs more than seven rooms it's currently assigned in order to be successful. They need a designated special education room for one-on-one work. They also need more rooms to successfully operate a middle school. Ideally, they need 14 rooms, and I'm sure that the school will continue to produce academic success such as yourself, myself. I would recommend that this, this school changed my life, and that is why this is so important to me.
Vanessa Brannon, Ellie Ratliff, and Mark Brennan.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Brannon. I am the mom of two SBS students. My son is a fourth grader at Lipton Springs. This is his second year at the school. He's autistic, and he's in the special ed program access. I am here to request that you strongly consider giving Lipton Springs the additional seven rooms we need to bring it up to a total of 14 rooms at the new Robert Eagle Staff building. There are many reasons why our school needs this additional space in this very specific location, but I really want to talk about the special needs programming. When Lipton Springs was given seven classrooms at Robert Eagle Staff, they did not have the access program as part of the school, but in 2015, the program was added, and many children, including my son, were brought to that school. Many of those kids were brought to Lipton Springs because of traumatic experiences in their old schools. His previous school was out of compliance for special education, and many of the other kids in the access program here came from similarly difficult situations. Right now, the seven-room assignment does not include any space for access at all, for the program to continue at the new site. In addition, we have no class space for our special ed resource room or our Title I LAP room. We know that you, as a board, are dedicated to closing the achievement gap because Lipton Springs student population includes 32% special needs students. Providing adequate space for these programs is one of the most important ways to achieve this. In addition, these extra aids in these rooms are benefiting all of the students, not just our special ed kids. The other way to provide is to provide space for single-grade classrooms for the elementary and middle ed students. In previous years, they were combined, as Madeline talked about. My son was in her class as part of the third and fourth grade last year, and he was struggling significantly in math. This year, just in the last four months in the single-grade classroom, he has risen to the second in his grade for math. My son's autism diagnosis was a big blow to our family. So many of our hopes and dreams for him were dashed, and yet, over the past year and a half at Lipton Springs, he's blossomed in ways we never thought we would see. So please help Lipton Springs to continue to change kids' lives.
Hi, I'm Ellie Ratliff, and I cede my time to Rachel Shirley of White Mountain Apache Edgewater Clan.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us. I'm Rachel Shirley, and I'm here tonight in solidarity, and I'm also here to emphasize the importance of this school and its programs that it provides to our children, in particular the Native American aspect and the access program. Lipton Springs is an all-inclusive, culturally responsive school. Their motto is "Writing Seem to Justice, Learning with Joy, and Building Future." Their mission is a creative, holistic, experiential learning environment, and that is what my daughter Emma needs, and I'm sure what other children need as well. My child is Native American, and she is dyslexic, which means she learns differently from the majority. The teachers and staff of Lipton Springs are not afraid to embrace this challenge. In fact, they confidently step up every day where other schools have made it a problem. Without this school, it would be a significant gap in my child's education. The access program is an inclusion program, which means most of the students spend a majority of learning time in general ed. However, a key component for the program's success is a dedicated, individualized space where these children can receive academic and social instruction, as well as much-needed break times, a place where they can have a safe and quiet time and relax from the stresses of school. These children try so hard every single day to live up to our expectations, our standards, and our goals. Let us live up to theirs and give them the tools and the space they need to meet these expectations, and in doing so, we secure a strong, vibrant, inclusive school community that gives our community greater value. Thank you guys so much for listening.
My name is Mark Brennan. Thank you for taking my comments today. My daughter attends Daniel Bagley Elementary School. We live in North Seattle. That's our neighborhood school. My son is at Lipton Springs, and we feel very fortunate that he is there right now. I just want to share some data that the principal shared with me the prior week. This was eye-opening for me. 30% of the students at Lipton Springs are native. 32% of the students are in special ed. 10% are homeless, and I take that to mean that they're Title I LAP, and more than 50% aren't free and reduced lunch. This is a unique learning community, and they need equity. They need to help. I've heard many of you speak tonight about the opportunity gap, or I heard recently about the achievement gap, and the distinction is a little unclear to me still, but I know that in this space that we've been allocated of these seven rooms, it's not enough room for these kids to succeed. We need those 14 rooms. We are so excited about the learning community at Lipton Springs. We've even considered bringing our daughter there because we want them to be at the same school. They're our community. We want to go to the school that is close, that is in this location, that was the promised location. We can't drive somewhere else to a school across town, and we can't fit into the seven rooms. Please allocate 16 rooms for Lipton Springs.
Taryn Grove, John Chapman, Alexandra Porter.
Hold on, I'm gonna leave that there. I'm new to this. I'm Taryn Grove, mom to Quinn and Reed. Since the launch of Eagle Staff was announced, we've been expecting it will be done in such a way as to preserve the strength of our community. Recently, my expectations have faltered as I've learned about the implications of the Growth Boundary Plan. I've learned Whitman's enrollment will drop by 366 students next year and sustain excess capacity for the foreseeable future. A third of the new HCC student body is requesting that they grandfather at their current school. Greenwood and Broadview Thompson tonight are asking to be fed back into Whitman, and Lipton Springs is requesting additional space at Eagle Staff, which we all want them to have. I personally am watching my community fracture as groups splinter off, hoping to achieve relief for the pain that they fear will come if they do not advocate for themselves. There have been secret meetings and angry emails between previously cohesive groups that one position harms another. Quinn from Hamilton HCC and Reed rising to Whitman have a legitimate reason to fight, not. On January 4th, you are charged with updating the student assignment plan to modify HCC pathways. I am here to suggest an off-the-wall idea with the potential to resolve a number of the concerns raised tonight. Launch the new highly-capable cohort at Whitman Middle School. Launching it at Whitman will bring together the growing group of Whitman area families split between two middle schools. It will lessen the blow to Whitman programming by bringing enrollment back to a more stable long-term number, and if done along with other feeder changes, they will return Whitman to its current levels of programming. It will free up capacity to honor commitments made to Lipton Springs at Eagle Staff. It will minimize impacts to the new HC cohort should you approve the grandfathering amendment. And above all, launching the cohort at Whitman will help keep the North Seattle school community intact and ensure continued strong programming and a rich educational experience for each and every student, regardless of which school they attend, for years to come. We are stronger together. Thank you.
Hi, my name is John Chapman. I have junior at the center school and an eighth grader who will graduate this year from Lipton Springs. In the past three years, Lipton Springs has taken on the challenge of building a learning community that serves Seattle's urban Native community, and this is not something that comes with an off-the-shelf solution. When our tribal schools in the area, when they've opened schools, it takes about an average of three years of engagement and planning before they even open their doors, and we've been doing this sort of on-the-fly, learning as we go. And we're working with a population that comes from hundreds of tribes across the nation, across the continent. We focus strongly on recruiting Native students, which has built our population to 30% of the school. We've made some mistakes. We've had to rethink some long-held traditions like our multi-grade classrooms. In the past three years, our teachers have implemented tribal sovereignty curriculum throughout the school, collaborated with the educators in UW on a culturally responsive science curriculum. We have a new science teacher that's doing rigorous culturally responsive ESTEM. We have an art curriculum written in conjunction with co-sailish artists, and we have esteemed collaboration between the art teacher and the science teacher. They're doing place-based, kids are doing place-based artwork in their science observation field sites. We have a librarian who's a woman of color, who's a robotics expert, and is busting through stereotypes of what a scientist is. And we continue to have a rigorous middle school program that has kids doing research and writing comparable to high school, better than some kids get in high school. And we're wrapping all that with trauma-informed practices and training in dealing with our traumatized students. We have built the foundation for a strong and vibrant school that will grow and serve Seattle students. So if our enrollment is not at what we would like it to be right now, that's because we know we have a foundation that will build and grow in this community. Thank you.
My name is Alexandra Porter, and I'm standing here tonight as a concerned parent and community member. I've emailed each of the board members directly as well a detail of what I'm going to speak with tonight, but I'm personally tonight asking that the board give 14 rooms to Lipton Springs at the new Robert Eagle Staff location, and I can boldly say with 100% confidence that Lipton Springs needs the 14 rooms. And in return, I can also give 100% reassurance that we will be able to create enrollment growth to fill that space to capacity. I'm asking you to take pause in the decision-making process of room assignments over the next month and to contact our community to fully understand how it is I can stand here tonight and say such bold statements with absolute honest truth. And I'm also asking the board to take the time to grasp the role Lipton Springs has for our underserved and underprivileged children in our communities, which is 75% of our current enrollment. We need the 14 rooms to continue serving them and to be able to grow to serve a larger part of our community. So please ask yourselves, where is the equity in allocating resources, and does the board see right now the unique opportunity at hand to support success among natives, the FRL kids, students with special needs, along with many of our children who haven't been thriving at the more classic public schools? So in a nutshell, giving us only seven rooms is sort of like putting Lipton Springs in hospice. If you look at the race and equity tool that the board uses when making policy and decisions, you can see that only having seven rooms will negatively impact 75% of our school. So I would like to take that negative statistic and reword it with positivity. Having 14 rooms will positively impact the populations that need the most support in order to achieve success. So 14 rooms will take Lipton Springs out of hospice and allow our program to remain vital and serving those in need. So finally, I'd like to bring to light the unjust irony that one of the largest issues at hand is that we're discussing a Native American sacred location, a Native American school covered in murals with Native American icons, and yet, on the inside, it's a Native American program which is being marginalized and minimalized with the lack of equity. Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Sharon Peasley, Monica Greenberg, and Kathleen Durham.
Greetings, board and Dr. Nyland. I'm Sharon Peasley, former school board director. Please amend the student assignment plan to give Lipton Springs K-8 at least 14 rooms in the Eagle Staff building. The school board voted in 2013 to give the school 14 rooms at Lincoln with enrollment up to 350 students to be moved to Wilson Pacific. The current plan to move the schools into six rooms or seven at Eagle Staff makes no sense. It's impossible to fit a nine-grade school into six or seven rooms. 10 rooms may be under consideration as a compromise, but the school needs at least 14 rooms so that it has a classroom for every grade, three resource rooms, a computer lab, and an art room. These rooms are in constant use every day. Sharing them with a comprehensive middle school would severely restrict access and require elementary schools to navigate a sprawling middle school. Most importantly, this isn't necessary. Enrollment projections show Whitman far below capacity for more than five years. By redirecting one or two schools to Whitman instead of Eagle Staff, there will easily be at least 14 rooms for Lipton Springs. Is any Is any other K-8 in the district expected to combine grades or to function without special ed rooms, an art room, or a computer lab? The fact that Lipton Springs is a Title I lap school focused on native students entitles it to more resources according to the policy on race inequity. So why is it being denied the space it needs? SBS has invested approximately six million dollars to save the native murals at Wilson Pacific and to create a token space for the Lipton Springs schools. It's time to move beyond tokenism and make a serious commitment to this school and its students, many of whom are Native American. Please keep the promise made by the board and give Lipton Springs at least fourteen rooms at Eagle Staff. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Monica Greenberg. My son Sammy is a kindergartner at Lipton Springs K-8. And guess what? I am here to ask you to make changes to the student assignment plan at Robert Eagle Staff Middle School so that fourteen classrooms can be provided there for Lipton Springs K-8. We agree that every student in Seattle deserves the space and the place to succeed. Our place is at Lipton Springs, but I believe that our school needs more space at Robert Eagle Staff for all of our students to succeed. I could go on in great detail about my own personal concerns and my own precious snowflake. Trust me, I really can. But that is not my primary reason for being here. Our native students deserve to have the place and the space that they need to succeed at Robert Eagle Staff. I've been asked to share some words from one of our native parents who couldn't be here tonight. She writes, "My name is Amy Markishdom. I am an enrolled Makah tribal member, as is my son, a first grader at Lipton Springs. I also have two granddaughters in kindergarten and second grade. We have always been active in the native community and invested in student success. We live in Lipton Springs. We want our children to be part of a school with a native focus and a social justice curriculum. We placed our students at Lipton Springs at Lincoln with the commitment being that we would eventually be in the Lipton Springs community. We are not alone. We currently occupy fourteen rooms at Lincoln, and the seven classrooms allotted at Robert Eagle Staff are not adequate for educational success. The school and community deserve a real chance to grow. Please honor your commitment to native student success, be warriors, and fight for our children. Don't perpetuate the wrongs native people have experienced in the name of education, and help our students to have a school where they can thrive and grow." Thank you for your time. That's from her, and also thank you for your time from me. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Kathleen Durham. I have three Seattle Public School students, the oldest of whom is a seventh grader at Hamilton. I'm here to express my ardent support for the grandfathering amendment that's been proposed to the student assignment plan. I could also tell you about my precious snowflake, and she's precious, but everyone's snowflake is precious. What I'm here to talk to you today about is the impact that's going to happen to these eighth graders, is quite a small number of kids who are going to be grossly impacted by this change. Changes in school assignments are significant disruption to students and their families. This amendment to grandfather these students would mitigate some of that disruption for these rising eighth graders who have invested quite a bit of time and energy in making friendships, achieving academic goals, and progressing through language and music programs that will not be in place for them as eighth graders in the new Eagle Staff Middle School. The unique predicament of these rising eighth graders forced to switch schools is also significant. In the case of the students going from Hamilton to Eagle Staff, they will be going to a brand-new school that is already expected to be over-enrolled with no history and little preparation for these programs that they have been pursuing for the last two years, such as music and sports and language immersion, in addition to academic opportunities. Students at Whitman, because of under-enrollment, are being allowed to stay, but our students will be forced to go, making a very small eighth-grade cohort. I have a rising sixth grader who's going to be going to Eagle Staff next year, and I am fully committed to the success of that school. I am fully committed to the success of that middle school experience for her and for her compatriots. But I'm also committed to the opportunity for my seventh grader, rising eighth grader, to continue at Hamilton. She has formed friendships. She has come out of her shell in these years. And I ask you to do the right thing and act in the best interests of these students. This small group of eighth graders will make very little difference to Eagle Staff, but this grandfathering amendment will make a huge impact on their lives, so I ask you to support the amendment. Thank you.
Next is Renee Remlinger-T, Gloria Villa, and Stan Cohen.
First of all, I just want to say thank you for all the work you do. You have a hard job, and many of us appreciate what you're doing for us. I'm the parent of a fourth grader at Cascadia who we think will go to Robert Eagle Staff Middle School when she starts middle school. My family is very excited for her to have that experience. It's going to be a new, vibrant, exciting, and no doubt excellent school that will be comprehensive. And there's lots to look forward to. And I also support grandfathering eighth graders, not only for my seventh grader who's at Hamilton, but across the district. The Washington kids who are supposed to go to MEANIE, their Eckstein and Jams kids who are supposed to go to Eagle Staff. This is about a lot of eighth graders. So many families, and I ask you to please support the grandfathering amendment, the student assignment plan. Thinking about your strategic plan and your mission to make student-centered decisions, which, here's a printout from your website, strategic plan, the first bold is, "Our students come first." Thinking about that, and the equity, decisions based on equity and ensuring basic education needs are met for all students in the schools. No one should get anything more, and no one should get anything less than another. Grandfathering eighth graders will allow you to do just that, follow your mission and honor it. All Whitman students have been told that they can stay at Whitman, sixth, seventh, and eighth graders, because there's space there. It would be equitable if all the other rising eighth graders could stay at their schools. I've been in the HCC community for four years, and I witnessed the split happen with Jams. And it's known that it was especially hard on those eighth graders academically. The principal had to scramble for funding to make sure they got the right classes for their just-right basic education, and also socially, emotionally. So some say you should follow best practices and follow that, but today you can make a different decision and actually do something that works better. What I wanted to do today, and I'm running out of time, is just provide some quotes of kids, because this is about twelve- and thirteen-year-olds. I have five different kids who've told me why they want to stay at Hamilton. The bottom line is, they want to continue in the community they've been in. They want to look forward and follow through in the eighth grade, things they get to do at that school.
Please conclude your remarks.
Yeah. And then the last thing is, a ninth grader said, "Eighth grade is when she really got to blossom and deepen relationships with friends and students." So thank you for listening today.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gloria Villa. I am the mother of an eighth grader and a sixth grader at Hamilton International in the HCC program. I come to here today because I feel that the board believes that each child matters, and that its number-one goal is to excellence and equity. Well, I feel the grandfathering should only apply to all students or to none of the students. I believe that all Northwest HCC students should be able to stay at Hamilton, or all should leave together to be at Eagle Staff. I feel that it's not equitable that a select group be allowed to stay and another group that is also already there not be allowed to stay. My daughter is a sixth grader currently, right now. She reminded me that she had struggled this year learning all the new school, the rules, the layout, the teachers, environment, and making many new friends that would not be joining her at Eagle Staff. After several months, she felt that she had finally felt like it was her school. She did not want to have to do that again, because it had been exhausting, and she had worked so hard at it. So who's to say whose strain is greater, sixth graders or seventh graders, when each child matters? I'm hoping that you will consider either allowing all the Northwest HCC students to stay together, or to have them leave together. I feel that this is equitable and what the board supports in its commitment to each child matters and to its excellence and equity goal. I also feel that we want a robust HCC program, and only by being together and working on a single school that would help it be successful. So I really encourage you to really look at what you're doing, whether it's splitting up and allowing only certain students to be the ones that are included. I feel that we should focus on inclusion for all, and this amendment is about inclusion for only some. Thank you.
Next is Stan Cohen, followed by James Bristow. Mr. Cohen? I would then move to James Bristow, please. Board president, that concludes the testimony list for this evening. We are at eighteen, or I'm sorry, that was seventeen speakers.
Is there anybody else who would like to speak tonight?
We are welcome to, we have three additional spots then, if anyone else would like to come forward to speak.
All right, that appears to conclude our public comment section of the meeting. Thank you all very much for coming. So now we will proceed on to the board comments. Director Harris, would you like to speak first?
Forty-seven point four million dollars. That's the amount today of the McCleary fines and sanctions at one hundred thousand dollars per day, as ordered by the Washington State Supreme Court. Thank you to the Garfield representative, Ms. Mackley. Thank you as well to the Garfield student testifier, Ms. Felicia...
Daisy.
Daisy. Thank you. It's hugely important to hear from our students' boots on the ground, and appreciate very much. And I hope we see you again, and I hope we see you commenting on board policies this next year. Thank you to all that have testified and have called, written, and shown up at the various meetings, work sessions, and community engagement meetings, and at the board retreat last Saturday. Thank you to our teachers and staff who every day try to meet the needs and challenges of our students under extraordinary circumstances and in the face of many, many unfunded mandates. Thank you to the folks on the Community Engagement Task Force. We're making progress. We're not there yet, and frankly, it will take and will be a culture change. But we're excited by the possibilities here, and we need your input from the public. And to Carrie Campbell especially, from whom I get far too many emails after nine PM at Thank you to the staff for the two-by-twos and the other opportunities to work with staff to collaborate and move forward on our terribly valuable initiatives. Thank you to my fellow executive committee members and the opportunity to work as a team. Betty, I hope it's been good for you as a president and a leader. It's been good for me. Thank you. Thank you to my friend and council member Lisa Herbold for her adding to the city budget funds to assist childcare providers that might be displaced as a result of our capacity crises, remember January through March of last year. Painful, painful memories. Thank you to Teresa Hale, Board Office Manager. You're a star, and I wish you the best on your transfer to Human Relations. I will miss your cashews and great attitude and support. Here's the hard part. There has been an op-ed piece published recently by one of our colleagues that suggests this board has been cavalier regarding amendments to the boundary changes at our last meeting, with the implication that the amendments were, quote, "willy-nilly" and provided at the last minute, cost one million dollars, and that by spending the nine million dollars underspent in addressing staff requests earlier this summer to focus on goals, including the opportunity gap closing initiatives, MTSS A and B, and system fixes, was irresponsible, and that somehow these actions pit the north end against the south end needs. I respectfully disagree. The board has been consistently requesting on several occasions more details on how the nine million dollars has been spent thus far, and for the detail to back up the one million dollar estimates, and any increased costs for the initiatives passed by this board. We have received estimates without the bases for reaching these estimates. We will keep trying. I will defend anyone's First Amendment rights to speak out, but would respectfully suggest there are more collaborative ways to do so, and would appreciate accuracy being a touchstone. I also appreciate that we have brought forth Superintendent Nyland's evaluation and contract to the table this evening. To Superintendent Larry, you are a class act, and your service and candor have been extremely appreciated by this board member, and I look forward to working with you and continuing to work with you for the next year. Thank you. I also appreciate the work done by outside counsel Patty Eeks and Lindsay Munt, and working with the entire board through this process, and with Director Blandford and myself to negotiate the contract before you this evening. I was lucky enough to attend the Core Plus Symposium yesterday, which addresses CTE pathways and is a consortium of lots of good folks that provides alternative pathways for our students that can provide living wage jobs in hugely necessary positions throughout our fine city, or, as Director Burke says, "Seattle-ready." We saw an extraordinary video from the Rayner Beach High School Port of Seattle Internship Program, which I hope we can emphasize on our website, and see more of that. We've already reached out to the Port of Seattle to do so. To my colleagues and constituents, thank you for the honor of serving you, have made mistakes, and look forward to working collaboratively in spanning our circle, replicating success, closing the opportunity gap, and to meeting Seattle students and family needs for every child. From the Boran K-7 community, we hear you on Tier Three. We're working hard. My next community meeting will be at the Del Ridge Library, December seventeenth, from one to three PM. Happiest of holidays, and let's reach out. And recognize that the holidays are not necessarily happy for everyone, and we need to reach out to help our neighbors. Thank you so much.
Anyone else like to make some comments? Director Burke?
Let's see if I can navigate my notes. Director Harris did a great job with the gratitude, and so I'd like to just ditto that. And it's kind of the easy way out, but she did it so eloquently that I don't want to overdo it. But I do want to thank our guest on the board, Ms. Mackley, and her colleague at Garfield, Ms. Basie, for bringing forward the concerns from their school and also getting a window into what we do. Just as a side note, when you're interested in some of the... Just as a side note, when you're interested in some of the things that go on, and you read through that Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, the SRR Handbook, that is policy work. And so when you're doing policy work, it feels sometimes not very dramatic, but those are the sort of things that can be really influential. They set guideposts for all of our students, all of our leaders, all of our buildings to follow. And so I really wanted to especially thank you for the work that you and the Garfield community did to provide feedback on that. I wanted to also put another point of thank you and recognition on our Schools of Distinction. This is such a show of support, or of just amazingness, for lack of a better word, for the leadership of our principals, for the focus of our educators, and for the support of the families at these schools. And, you know, there are some people that are doing some things right, and they model our educational best practices. They provide us success stories that we can draw on, and so I wanted to put out a thank you for that as well. A special note of gratitude for outgoing President Petu. You're amazing. You serve with empathy, candor, your commitment to students, and closing the equity gap, and saying what's on your mind is inspiring, so thank you for that. I want to mention, I had an opportunity, and I, special thanks to Wyeth Jesse and Kerry Hansen, who were running an MTSS work session. This was a group of department and building leaders putting their heads together to institutionalize the multi-tiered systems of support. And so, you know, we look up on the walls that our school's a distinction, but we're trying to take that and make it system-wide. And so this group is, they're looking for ways to take, extract the highest value, the highest leverage practices from these schools, pull them together along with implementation guides and tools, and help deploy it through the rest of the district. So I know that that work is slow-moving sometimes and doesn't have a lot of visibility, so that's why I was really appreciative and wanted to publicly thank Wyeth and his team for letting me kind of see inside the factory while they're making that all happen. I want to also build on Dr. Nyland and Leslie Harris, Director Harris's comments about yesterday's meeting at the Manufacturing Industrial Council. We got to hear from outgoing State Superintendent Randy Dorn and Superintendent-elect Chris Rechdal about, you know, their ideas in education, and how career and technical education can build on that, how it can be a gap-closing strategy, how critical it is. And it was really special to me that our skills center was front and center in that, Raynor Beach High School, and one of our students, one of our own, who successfully carried out an internship with the Port of Seattle. So I think the prestigious and dedicated folks in that room really further highlights to me how important that is as an educational tool. Budget, this is a tough challenge that we face, and, you know, it's easy to spend, but it's hard to save, it's hard to cut. And so my ask is that people attend the budget community meetings that are coming up and share the struggle, because it's pretty easy to say, oh, well, you know, we shouldn't cut that, we shouldn't cut this. But we have to make some tough prioritization, and so getting authentic community input to help us with that is really valuable. And I also ask that people recognize that we will get through this, and we will get through it together. You've heard a couple times from my colleagues the idea of holding hands as we go through this, and although it's going to feel sometimes like we have to pit one program against another or one school against another, if we focus on our commitment and our elbow grease, and maybe not worry quite as much about the dollars while we have to cut some things or make some tough choices, keep the positive mindset. For the Lipton Springs community, I've had the pleasure of meeting with Principal Merka and some of the staff touring the school, and hearing firsthand the story, the challenges of the program right now in its fourteen rooms, and what that would look like, or could look like, or couldn't look like, in the Robert Eaglestaff Building with six rooms plus a developmental special ed room. And it was clear to me from that that the plan as it stands is not really workable. So I'm committed to figuring out how we can find a good, a good plan that doesn't crowd the program out, that provides the opportunity for Lipton Springs to succeed in the new Robert Eaglestaff site. And I want for the school community as well to think creatively about how we can do that, because the board director hat, when I put that on and think about fiscal responsibility for the entire district, I can't in good conscience put a school with 150 students in fourteen large, full-size classrooms. If there are other students that have needs and that are, that vacant space just doesn't flow well for me. But if we can think creatively about how the program can have individualized spaces, how the program can have a growth trajectory so that it's not choked out, you know, let's look at something, some sort of a compromise position, and I'm enthusiastic about trying to help the community find that, so that we're not overextending on budget, but we're not choking out this program, because the work that's happening in those schools, in those classrooms, that's where the amazing stuff really happens. It's not up here from the dais. I think I will hold most of my discussion around the student assignment plan to introduction on that topic, but I thank the community who's provided input, and want to bring everybody's attention to the amendments. Some of them have just been introduced today, so if we don't have an opportunity to dialogue on them, I want to be very explicit that these amendments represent a vehicle by which we can communicate and talk about options. And over the next month, between today, when we introduce, and January 4th, when we vote on the student assignment plan, I remain wide open to hearing feedback from community and understanding what are the points of pain, what are the unintended consequences, and making adjustments as needed. To that end, I have a community meeting scheduled, which has not been posted, but will be shortly, Greenwood Public Library, on this Saturday, December 10th, from 4:00 to 5:45. I welcome people to come to that, and I'm trying to schedule a second one probably for December 31st, so that we can break in the New Year's. I want to have a second meeting before the final approval of this, so that will also be posted shortly. Thank you very much, and my, you know, Happy New Year to everyone.
Director Gary?
Thank you, everybody, for coming to the board meeting. I always appreciate seeing everybody who takes the time to come to South Sodo to talk to us. Thank you, Betty. I guess the hardest thing about thanking Betty for her presidency, or Director Petu, is that it sounds like she's leaving us, and she's not. So we will get to thank her, continue to be thankful for all the great attributes that she brings to our board, and so it just, thanks for still being here, too. Thank you, Teresa. I will miss you. She's my new wave music partner in the boardroom, and so I'll have to seek her out, and we can talk about 80s music together. But it's those little things, it's the smiles that people bring to us day-to-day as we go through the district, that I think we all appreciate, and keeps us excited about our jobs. And so every person that we meet is an opportunity for a relationship, and somebody to connect with on a deeper or a different level as well, and we just have to remember that. There will be new people coming in, and so while I will miss you, Teresa, I know our next person will have some unique attribute. Anybody who comes to work in the district comes here because they care about the education of our children, and we have to always hold on to that in everything we do, even when we're at odds with the people around us, that we have to know that ultimately somewhere we share that common core, and that keeps us moving forward, and hopefully with a smile on our faces, we deal with one another. Thank you, Ms. Mackey, for coming. Not always easy to sit up in front of a group of people and put together coherent thoughts in a linear matter and have nobody answer to you. It's not a discussion, as you saw, and sometimes that's a little odd, but I appreciate what you said, and I heard what you said, and along with your fellow student, Ms. Daisy, Felicia. The thing I love about Garfield is that I have such faith that as we face hard times, your student body continues to formulate the questions that we need to grapple with. And no, it's not always your job to have the answer, and no, we don't always come up with the best answer, but that relationship has to continue, and your community does such a good job of continuing to bring those questions to us. But you also, I think, do a great job of grappling within your community on those, and you don't just look at the status quo as the way things have to be. And so I just appreciate that about Garfield, and while it would be lovely to give you more money to solve all the problems that were identified, we would love to do that with every school, and we hear every week, or every month, from those schools. I know that your community will do the best as there are hard times to come up with answers to these hard questions, and so we support you in that, we know you're doing that, and we recognize how hard that is, and how it's hard to create unity when there are such big issues, hard issues coming down. So we have to do that as well across the whole district, but it's, thank you for coming. The Schools of Distinction, it is so much fun, it is a bright spot. We look at our banners, we hear about them at so many of our meetings, and I'm going to just sort of piggyback on what Director Burke said, and that's share the work. Let's not reinvent the wheel. In hard times, we have to continue to do what's working and figure out ways to eliminate what isn't. So thank you for all the work that you have done within your communities, and I know it's the strong leadership, but we also hear from the parent groups in those schools, and what they bring, and how they wrap around their schools, and they protect their schools. And that gets to a comment, well, I'm going to address the idea of the boundaries decision, and I'm going to tie that into Lipton Springs as well. Because when we made amendments on the boundaries, I had in great mind the Olympic Hills Elementary Community, and how that is one of our Schools of Distinction, and one that we are very, very proud of. And we know that strong communities support the kids, and you see great results from them. And that when we have hard decisions to make around capacity and around budget, I guess I am not personally willing to make it on the backs of our kids who are identified as of color, or members of the achievement gap, or free and reduced lunch, all the different labels that we put on kids that identify the gaps that we see. And so I don't know if it's fiscally responsible or morally responsible to make sure that you're putting those kids first and you're protecting those communities. And I will tend to go, nobody's ever accused me of being overly fiscally responsible, but I let that morality guide me. And so when I hear from the Lipton Springs community, and yes, I heard very clearly that we're looking at 32% special ed, 30% Native American, more than 50% free and reduced lunch, and once again, we're looking at solving a problem on communities that we have identified and labeled. They are our achievement gap communities, and they're our vulnerable communities, and they're also the communities that historically seem to be the ones that are easiest to move around. And when you move students around, their education suffers. If you treat them as the ones just because they're smaller, they're less vocal, they're easier to put in someplace, if you don't respect the integrity of their programs, then you've just contributed to the problem that you're just giving mouth service to. So I hear you, Lipton Springs, and it seems to me that your community has been identified for a long time, and at some point, somebody decided to put an access program in there as well. So at one point, knowing that you're going to Robert Eaglestaff, there was a decision to increase your population with a community that needs a separate educational environment. That was on us. That was a decision we made as a district, knowing the future of that program. So we need to honor that it was our job to have the foreseeability of meeting the needs of this school, because we, as a board, who went through a process to say we weren't going to let schools or programs disappear through attrition, but that we were going to be purposeful and mindful about it. And I'm feeling, again, that pressure. We're not being mindful, we're not being respectful of our past decisions. I appreciate our board, former board director coming and talking to us to give us her perspective on the decisions she thought she was making. So I say that so that we, as a district, can continue to think, and I think you can see where I'm going to go in terms of trying to figure out and listen and work with Director Burke to figure out how to make this work. But we need to make it work, because we had the foreseeability problem, and it's our job to protect the communities that we create. And welcome to our new leaders and our new board. I have great faith in you to work on the behest of our students, and on the behest of all of our employees, and our district leaders, and making sure that we are doing our best to make them excited about coming and doing this work with us every day. So let's look for ways to market, commend the positive, and grow together, and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
First, I would like to say thank you to Ms. Mackley and her colleague for sharing with us your insights about your school. And I always appreciate comments from our students, because we're here because of you. So we really appreciate the fact that you're able to come out here and share with us your ideas, and what is it that you have that you feel that we need to look at. So thank you again for being here. I specifically like to say thank you to some of the staff person that I felt that whenever I needed their assistance or need information, that they would always come back to me with a phone call, or they would email me, or they would text me, because that's one of my frustrations, is when I can't find the information right away for me to be able to tell a community person or a parent that needed information. Sometime I get panicky, to the point where I'm calling constantly to make sure that I find someone. But these two people actually have always been right there when I need them, and that's his Peggy McAvoy and Flip Herden, for always coming to my rescue when I need them for information in terms of transportation, or boundaries, or anything that has to do with enrollment. So I want to say thank you so much for that support. I also want to thank Eric McCurdy and Pat McCarthy for their support of keeping our stadium intact, and helping us about, giving us ideas about the new renovation that we're hoping in 2019 for our stadium. They're the one that's down there, all in that end of the field, and they kind of keep an eye out on everything that's going on in terms of what's happening with our stadium. And so I appreciate their watchful eye in terms of that area of, actually, something that we don't hear much about, but I thank them for keeping an eye out for us. I also would like to say thank you to Mayor Murray for his work in helping us to eliminate opportunity gap. We know that in the past, we have not had a great relationship with the city, but I think that because we need each other, this year has been a great year for us to move forward. forward, and just hearing him say, "We're here to help support you in whatever way we can," I think that's what it's all about. You know, we support each other in the work that we do because we're always needing support. We can't do it by ourselves. When things don't go right, we need people on our right, people on our left, and those who we can actually be able to come across. And he's made a very clear statement that they're there to help support us in this time of crisis, when we're looking at a very high deficit for our school, and I appreciate his effort in terms of reaching out to us. I want to thank you to Chappelle, Dwayne Chappelle, for always being there for us as a district. Whenever we need help, we call Dwayne Chappelle, and he's always been there. It's great. I always tell, I told the mayor, "That was the best thing you ever did was hire Dwayne Chappelle," because when we need him, he's always there to explain to the city how Seattle Public Schools, how we can make, you know, we can relate to the various areas that happens in our school. So it's always great to have someone in there that we know that we can count on, and I appreciate that support. I also would like to say thank you to my children. They have been the support and the core of the work that I do. When I come home and feeling depressed, they're the one that tells me, "Mom, it's okay, you can keep going because you've been doing it forever." And so, you know, I want to also thank them because within my own district, they provide a lot of support in the southeast and the various schools in my district, and I want to say thank you to them because they're my assistance and my help in terms of what I do in the community. And so I also wanted to say thank you again to Erin for always being there for me when I fall flat on my face. Make sure Sue remember Erin if you need help. And also Teresa. I know I've already said thank you to you already, but I don't know what I'm going to do without you. I always, when I come to the board, I expect to see you because I know that if I have a question that I can't answer, Teresa, you're always there. So thank you so much for all the work that you do. And also, I want to say for Lipton Springs, originally in 2013, it was Sharon Peaslee and I that actually made the recommendation to actually to provide space for Lipton Spring in the new Eagle Staff building. We were hoping that that continued, that statement, and that also that the board had passed to say that, yes, we are going to provide space for Lipton Spring. I didn't realize, though, that they're only getting seven rooms for their, to provide them that education. They have 150 kids, and I hear that a lot, but you have to realize it's 150 kids with various needs. We have to look at it from that perspective. We're not just looking at 150 kids body-wise, but the needs that each one of those kids have, those are the needs we have to look at. So providing them 14 rooms is, actually would be the ideal thing to do, because that was actually, at least in my mind, that's what we have specified when we originally passed that amendment to be able, or that actually, that particular area to be able to provide them with the space that they needed so they can have their program there and also be able to provide the specification that they actually, is a part of their program. We don't have a Native American program specifically for that particular group, and I think that Lipton Spring has done a great job in actually bringing them in in terms of actually welcoming the families and being a part of that particular program. So I'm hoping that as we look and continue to hear what's going on with Lipton Spring, I would really like for us to look at how important it is that we provide 14 rooms for that school, especially for the needs of the kids that are actually in that particular school. So hopefully that we can be able to look at that and make some correction, and also I wanted to say congratulations to our new executive team. I believe in both, in all three of you, and hopefully that you will do a great job in leading us through, especially in this time when we're at a deficit. So congratulations and lots of luck.
Director Blattford.
I'll endeavor to be brief with my remarks. I'd like to thank the audience as well for coming and testifying today or just listening in. It's always appreciated, and we listen very closely to what you have to say. My thanks also to Elise, as well as Felicia, who testified about Garfield High School. I'm very proud to be the director that has Garfield in my district. I take great pride in, and hear frequently from alumni of that school who have a great, great fondness and great pride in the school, and as you shared and others have shared, their willingness to kind of prompt the questions that we need to grapple with. I spoke before about a book that I read recently that described a high school that is very similar to Garfield High School and some of the challenges that are faced in that school, and would love to have further dialogue with you about that, and I'll tell you in a little while when my next community meeting is scheduled, so hopefully you'll have the opportunity to attend. I will also tell you that policymaking, I have discovered, is not very exciting to watch, and so there are lots of opportunities for you to observe what we do. They're not the most interesting things in the world for you to observe, but I think it is incumbent on students in Seattle, as well as our community, to be paying attention to what we do so that there's accountability for us, and there's opportunity for students and community members, parents, business interests to all weigh in, because the decisions that we make have a profound influence and effect on the lives of everybody that lives in this city. And so I think there's a kind of a mutual responsibility that we have to our community as well as the community does to us. My thanks also to the Schools of Distinction that were recognized earlier today. It is a huge lift to get to that place, and so the leaders who were here, we can't heap enough praise on them for the work that they have done and their staffs have done to get to that level, and so I, again, want to thank them. I received an email or a phone call a couple weeks ago, week and a half ago, from a employee of the district who worked very closely with my daughter when she was first, second, third grader at Beacon Hill International School. And she was sharing with me, she's at a new school now, and she was sharing with me kind of a crisis situation that I've heard playing out recently in many of our schools, and that is immigrant families feeling very uncomfortable about the kind of political climate that we live in these days. And she shared with me, the reason that she saw it as a crisis is she had talked to a number of parents who were uncomfortable actually coming into the schools because of fear that they would be rounded up. There are rumors out there around, about that issue. And as knowing what I know about the importance of adults and particularly parents and families being in our buildings and helping our students and helping our teachers, that, to me, is a red flag. It's something that we need to address. And so I called our communications office and had some conversation about what could potentially be done, and I'm really happy, I don't believe that I'm the person responsible for this at all, but I'm really happy to announce that there is a community meeting that is scheduled to address this very issue that is set for Saturday of this week from 10 o'clock to 1 o'clock at Denny International Middle School. And at that event, there are experts that will provide information on immigration and the rights of immigrants, safety in our schools, how to have challenging conversations or how to have conversations, hopefully they're not challenging, but conversations with your child during these challenging and uncertain times, anti-bullying, and a parent toolkit and family safety plans. So again, that is at Denny International Middle School, Saturday of this week from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. And my hope is that that will be the first of many conversations that the district is sponsoring around the city so that we can de-escalate some of the rumor mill and the anxiety that our immigrant families rightly are concerned about. And so I just want to give a huge shout out to all of the staff that has anything to do with doing this, because I feel like it's hugely responsive to the needs of our students and our families. I had the opportunity yesterday to listen to Dr. Abe give his presentation. Superintendent Nylund spoke a little bit about that presentation. He was speaking in front of our principal corps yesterday, and his talk about racism in the city of Seattle was very well received, I think, I believe, by the principals. Many of them came up to me to talk about that particular issue. After that was done, we heard a fabulous presentation about our LGBTQ students and the policies and practices that our schools are responsible for implementing to ensure that they have a level of safety and comfort in our schools. And so I shout out frequently to the aptly named Lisa Love, but as usual, she did an incredible job of sharing information with our principals so that they could take it back to their schools. Ronald Boy also participated in that presentation and did a fabulous job. After they were done, the difficult, a difficult part of the conversation commenced, and Jo Lynn Bergy did a fabulous job of sharing the details of our deficit and potential budget cuts. She was, she stood in the line of fire as she received a number of questions from principals who wanted to know the impacts of this potential cuts on their individual schools, and she was very informative and very nuanced in her responses. She didn't go too far because there, this is an evolving situation, and so I just wanted to appreciate her for the work that she did. And I also want to join with my school board colleagues in appreciating our president, President Patu, for her leadership over the course of this last year. It has been a challenging year in many ways, and we are all pleased and thankful for your leadership. I mentioned my community meetings, and I have one scheduled for January the 7th at 10, starting at 10 o'clock and going until noon, and also one on February 4th at the same time, and both of those are at the Douglas Truth Library, so not terribly far from Garfield High School. That's at 23rd and Yessler. And I encourage you to bring, to come and to bring any of your friends that you want to rap with the school board director. And lastly, I will finish my remarks by admitting that I am the person, I am the person who is responsible for the article that Director Harris referenced. And I take great pride in the fact that I wrote that article because I felt like I needed to surface some issues that were not being surfaced, and because I have great anxiety about the impact of the potential budget cuts that we are seeing or that we are anticipating, and the negative consequences that they would have, the detrimental and disproportionate consequences that they would have on our schools that are most vulnerable. We could go back and forth on this issue. I take great solace in the fact that when I was in this room yesterday talking with principals, I had so many principals that came up to me at one point or another and thanked me for making the comments that I had made, and I've gotten responses back from a number of parents and families in our community, as well as, you know, even got a response back from one of my professors at the University of Washington who said, "You were paying attention to what we were teaching while you were at school." And so I take all of that as solace. I know that it's difficult to have difficult conversations, and sometimes it's not pleasant, and people feel slighted and angry, and I apologize for that, but as I said, I stand by what I said, and rather than going back and forth on this, I'll take the guidance of the First Lady of the United States of America, and I will choose to go hi. Thank you.
Director Pinkham.
Katseio and Tatskalawat, thank you and good evening. First of all, Elise Mackley, thank you for coming here and sharing your words, and I can tell it was definitely a struggle, but I remember too, the first time I had to get up and speak to somebody, it is a struggle, but keep it up, keep going. The first time, I don't know if it's your first time, but as you get going, you get better and better, and I found out that then people start acknowledging you and listening to you and say, you know, "Here's someone that knows what they're talking about." I feel like you do know what you're talking about right now, because as a student, sharing, "Hey, here's my voice, here's what I have experienced," and please, you know, respect that as this is my perspective. So keep it up. And also to your classmate who looks like she left, thank you for sharing Garfield High School's experience, and glad to see that they have elected some good representatives there. Teresa Hale, thank you for your service, being your last board meeting, although I feel kind of slighted, I don't know if I got there after Leslie, I'd never seen any cashews. Did I miss something? Oh, okay, I'd remember to get there a little bit sooner. Thank you to all the Schools of Distinction, you know, I think it's definitely a reflection of the leadership there, the teachers, the counselors, the whole staff that makes that building run, and we also acknowledge the students that are there as well, you know, because as I, you know, my years in education, one fellow that I worked with at the University of Washington, he's had this motto that he used to always say, you know, "Your attitude determines your altitude." So I think, you know, if the school can really encourage those students, motivate those students to really achieve and be achievers, and the students buy into that, they will succeed. And I think they will succeed, because another one of his models is what works is work, because once we get our students willing to do the work, willing to make that commitment that, yes, I can better and improve myself, that's about, you know, more than half a battle, that then they'll see, I am doing this to make myself a better person in the community, make society better, and also maybe to share, again, my perspectives that are different from others. So congratulations to those schools. Former President Betty Batu, thank you for your leadership this past year, as I think maybe for the four new directors this past year. It's been a fast but wonderful year, and under your leadership, you gave us that, you know, vision and guidance, I think, you know, hopefully this next executive board members, Sue and Leslie, looking forward to serving you and serving with you as well so that we can continue improving this school district, because it will never be done. It's a job that's always going to have to be worked on, and the staff here that, you know, will definitely need you, and I appreciate that you're here. You know, you're here as, you know, more hours than I am as a board member, and I appreciate what you do to keep this school district running. We've got some difficult times ahead of us, but we will persevere and get through. And I must also, I want to thank actually Carrie Campbell for her presentation this Saturday, where she actually asked us to, you know, look around the room, find someone, and look them in the eye, and write something, you know, that you appreciate of them, and I think we need to do that more often, because again, when people know that you're appreciated, again, that helps their attitude, and we'll go all together in the right direction. So thank you, Carrie, for that, and I think I enjoyed doing it, and I shared a comment with Stefan and appreciate the work that he has done. Then again, just this past year, thank you to the fellow board members for getting me through this first year. As I said, I can't believe it's already been a year that we've been here on the board for the newcomers. An even bigger thank you again to the district staff and the support that you provided for And I did want to mention or get into as far as Lipton Springs and the space that they have currently at Lincoln and the space that they have currently at Robert Eagle Staff, and I think about that amendment that I heard or the bar back in 2013, and it brings to mind the word sympathetic construction. As a lecturer at the University of Washington in American Indian Studies, I use that word because it comes up many times in treaties, treaties signed between the U.S. government and the United States. And... and the United States. Sympathetic construction means the terms of that treaty are to be interpreted as the, in a sense, in this case, the American Indians expected them to be, not into the terms of what the United States said they were, but in the terms that the Indians that signed it thought they went. So, I think, you know, let's look at that, what happened back there in 2013, what were the intentions of that board action report? And if we can honor that, I, you know, let's, let's see what we can do, because Director Burke mentioned something, you know, let's work together, see if we can compromise. I unfortunately have the experience where that compromise usually comes at the detriment of the underserved. Okay, let's compromise, let's take something away from the underserved. So, can we as a school board, school district somehow see how can we compromise in favor of those underserved communities so we can help eliminate that opportunity gap? And one way that I can see that possibly can do it, it's what we did again at the University of Washington, when I-200 passed, when they said you can use racial, gender, other orientations for, in our case, admissions, our Native American staff and faculty stood up and said, "Wait a minute, American Indians aren't a racial group, they're a political group." So, we're able to push that if someone provided documentation of their, that they're a fairly recognized tribe, then yes, we can give them special consideration, because again, that isn't a racial identity, that's a political identity. So, that's something I would like to see, can we explore that, to try to find funding for an American Indian high school, to find funding to give space to Lipton Springs so they can grow. I don't have any community meetings planned for right now, but I do, will be at the Cedar Park community meeting on Thursday, December 15th. I will be coming from operations meeting, so I will be late, but I do plan to attend the Cedar Park community meeting to talk about, you know, Cedar Park and the plans for that site as an option school. Make sure I got all my notes taken care of. And just finally, again, Katseio, thank you all, and let's have a great next year coming for year number two. Thank you.
Okay, that leaves me. I also would like to thank the two Garfield students who came tonight and spoke to us, Elise Mackley and Felicia Bezy. You brought forth interesting and, and important points about your school. And in answer to Elise's question, what do we do with the comments and the questions that are brought to us from our students? Well, we, we start to think about them, and then sometimes we respond right here in the director's comments, and sometimes they evolve into some sort of action. So, you can certainly follow up with us if there's something in particular you'd like us to respond to, but we, it's always very helpful for us to hear directly from students. I also want to commend our schools of distinction, and at the board retreat, we talked about what can we do to replicate all our success stories? And we have our, our schools of distinction, and we have our outlier schools that are doing almost magical things, but really, it's, it's hard work, and we, we want to recognize those, but we also know that we have other great things going on in some schools that haven't necessarily been recognized, and it might be just some program or some approach or some philosophy. And we encourage these schools to come forth and share with us what they're doing, so all our other schools can learn from, from them. And we're talking about how to do that in a more formalized manner, have schools come to us at the board, have representatives from schools come to us at board meetings and present to us so that we can all learn from what they're doing, because we know that there's a lot of great work going on out there, and there's a lot of creativity, and these banners just represent some of it. Regarding the bell times, I'm pleased to hear that Peggy and her staff have been sharpening the pencil on how to make the two tiers possible or more affordable. So, thank you for looking at that. There's, there's a great deal of interest in that, and it could serve a lot of purposes in terms of the 10 minutes and the 20 minutes that we have to add to our school day. So, it could be really helpful in many levels, and also our student athletes who currently now are being impacted by late days. So, I know this is something that we'll have to consider in terms of the larger budget, but I love the direction it's moving in, in terms of becoming more, more affordable. We have on the agenda tonight two narratives, one for the superintendent evaluation and the other one for the board self-evaluation. So, just by way of background, the superintendent's evaluation was discussed in a public work session last Wednesday, November 30th. The board self-evaluation includes a summary of the discussion board directors had on Tuesday, November 22nd about the 2015-16 goals of the previous year. These goals included budget monitoring, community engagement, and cultural responsiveness, and they were carried forward from the previous year with some modifications to the specific goal language. I want to thank Directors Blanford and Pinkham for taking the lead on finalizing the narrative for the board self-evaluation. So, while we've been evaluating the board, we also evaluate the superintendent, and in a way, we're evaluating the district. And we have many challenges in front of us, and so, because of that, we looked at the goals, all of our goals, and said, "Are we meeting our goals?" And in some places, we are, but in other places, we're falling short, and we try to be pretty candid about that and constructive. And I think that we, if you take a look at what we said about the board's own work, you know, we weren't overly glossy about that either. We know we have a lot of hard work to do, but I think we have good team in place to do that work. So, in a way, so we're also looking at the budget as we prepare for a possible doomsday scenario next year, but in a way, looking at the budget is another way of evaluating the district, because it's a way of looking at what we do, why we do it, whether we're putting our resources in the right place. So, I strongly encourage all members of the community to get involved with our budget discussions, because we have to make some potentially hard decisions, and it's a way for you to weigh in and let us know what are the fundamentals that we should be focusing on. If we have to make difficult decisions, where can we make them? And it's, it's an important discussion for all of us to have. Regarding the testimony on Lipton Springs, and, you know, I, I shared the concern of my colleagues about the promises that we've made and whether we can keep our promises. I thought Director Gary made a very important point, which is, the school has actually evolved since when it was first placed at Lincoln, and it has other components to it. I think the special ed students are, in a way, additions to, to the school, and so, we have to look at how things have changed since the initial plans were made, and we should be adjusting to, to the new possibilities with that school. It's so wonderful to hear people like John Chapman talk about the school. It's very exciting to hear about the diversity of what they're trying to do and how they're doing it, from the, from the, the Salish artists and the, just every aspect of it that is so creative. If we can, if that school can grow, that would be fantastic. And so, I, I think we do need to take a look at what was promised and what's feasible. We are demanding a lot of one school in terms of the building, and so, we have to keep that in mind. So, hearing the other testimony about what to do about eighth graders, it was helpful as well. It also reminds us what it takes to build a school. It's not just a numbers game, how, how many kids can fit in a building. It's also what do you do to fill it with some kind of spirit, some kind of place, environment, nurturing environment, what, what's going to go into that? And so, my question to staff is what sort of assurances and resources is the district putting into the schools that we are opening? And the ones, right now, I'm talking about are the Robert Eagle Staff and then Meanie Middle School. What are, what are we able to promise these families? What kind of resources can we give them? Because if we can have that conversation, I think it'll be a lot more reassuring for people whose students are being sent to those schools to know that we have a commitment to make sure those schools will be worthwhile places for them. So, I will be having my next community meeting this Saturday from 11:00 to 1:00 at the Magnolia Library. And let me see what else. Oh, regarding these amendments, so Director Burke and I and Director Pinkham, we've put some amendments on to the student assignment plan tonight with the hope that we can hear from everybody between now and our final vote. Two of my amendments were actually carryovers from the growth boundary discussion, and so you may have heard, would have heard of them before back in November, but I still would love to get some more feedback. So, those of you who are interested or impacted by any of these amendments, please contact us between now and, and the, and then January, and let us know your, your thoughts on whether these, these seem like they would be helpful changes to the plan. And I think I'm just going to conclude with just a little aspirational message, and that is, you know, as board president, I am going to request that the board members, that we each respect each other, that we respect our colleagues, and that we do not misrepresent anyone's actions or motives. I know there's times when we disagree, but there are ways to handle disagreement that is constructive, and I would like to think that we all can feel, that we can speak in our meetings and our work sessions openly when we disagree with each other on, on what we are doing. To, to do it in a less than transparent way, or to do it in a, in a one-way fashion where others don't really have a chance to respond, is not really a constructive way for us to work as a team. I would also like to say that as a journalist, I still value accuracy, and I still think it matters despite current world and, you know, national events, and I would hope that whenever any of us talk about whatever the board has done or the district has done, we try to be as accurate as possible. Thank you. All right, so that concludes the board comments, and we now move on to the action portion of our meeting. All right, the first, the first item is the superintendent's employment agreement, the employment agreement duration and salary.
Madam President, we move that the board approve the amendment to the superintendent's employment agreement to increase the superintendent's base salary by the cost of living, or COLA amount, 1.8%, as set forth in the attachment to the board action report or bar. Immediate action is in the best interests of the district.
I second that motion.
All right. Did this go to a committee? I don't believe it did go to a committee. All right. Well, perhaps it was... Does anyone recall whether this officially went through a committee, whether this committee
I don't believe the specific item went through a board committee. Obviously, there was discussions amongst the board in executive session around this work, but it was not a bar that was brought to a committee.
Thank you. All right, are there any questions or comments about this item? Director Harris.
I very, very much appreciate the thoughtfulness of this board and the superintendent getting to this place and time. I appreciate that there are those out there that would prefer that we do something different, but I believe we reached consensus. I believe that we had good reasons for said consensus, and I believe that the continuity of this district is paramount. I also appreciate very much the superintendent not asking for a raise over the COLA that all the rest of the employees of this district received. I, I thought that that was an extraordinarily gracious move, and I thought that it was representative of our difficult work and our budget doomsday scenario.
This may be a point of personal privilege, or I defer to the chair, but recognizing that this bar is the employment agreement and, and salary discussion, I wanted to put a couple of comments that I didn't include in my director comments around the evaluation component, just because this is sort of related. So, with your permission, I, I just wanted to say that it continues to be a pleasure working with Dr. Nyland, that, you know, I found him to be extremely hardworking, committed, and, and that I hope that, that other folks that might have had a different experience or a different impression have the opportunity to, to work with him in a, in a, in a one-on-one or a smaller environment when he goes into, into educator mode and starts drawing up on the whiteboard or takes out the notepad and starts making a diagram of relationships or, you know, describes a past story that's, or a past experience that's extremely relevant. So, I've learned a huge amount, and I thank you for, you know, your, your leadership and your education for me, as well as what you've done for the district.
Any other comments or questions? Director Batu?
I too would like to add to what Director Burke have actually said. Being president of the board, you work very closely with your superintendent, and I do appreciate the supportness of the work that he did and also how we were able to work together and agreed on most things. We didn't even argue, matter of fact, we just discuss. And I think that having him to be a good listener and be able to take comments and coming up with strategies and how do you look at things a little differently, it's quite a breath of fresh air to actually, to have him tell you exactly how he feels. So, I really want to say to him, "Thank you so much for all the hard work that you did, moving us to a place where we can actually continue on the work that has already been started because of your initiative, and hopefully that, you know, that we've learned from each other." But I wanted to say, "Thank you so much for all that you have done for the Seattle Public School and the kids of this district."
Director Gary.
And I'll just simply say, "Thank you as well for always putting the, the needs of our students first and foremost, and sharing that vision with so many of our board directors and working so hard as we each bring our own perspective and our own hopes for the, the students of our district, even if they don't always align with what we have made as our goals. We each have our, our individual hopes and desires as well, and while trying to keep us on focus, but also acknowledging that our other ideas have value and seeing ways to try to make them work is very much appreciated."
Okay, I have a question for legal counsel, and then I also have a comment for Dr. Nyland. I too would like to thank Dr. Nyland for all of your work, and I look forward to continuing to work with you, and as we line up our arrows, as you often point out to us, we need to do, and thank you so much. So, General Counsel, during the public comment, a comment was brought up about the timeliness of when this bar was posted and the details of it not being made public until today. Now, that is not ideal, so I, I am a little concerned about that. However, can you speak to what the legal ramifications are of this particular action and the board's responsibility and the public's responsibility within this action?
Yes, certainly. Noel Treat, General Counsel, and I did hear that comment in public testimony. And yes, as you know, your, your policy does provide that generally, item, the agenda and, and bars will be posted three days in advance of a meeting. There are some exceptions built into that policy. So, that's the general approach, and that's generally what we try and do. There is, however, a safety, a pretty significant safety valve in that policy, which essentially says, even if you aren't able to post in time and you don't post in accordance with the policy, action you take or changes to the agenda you make at a meeting are still valid after vote, after being voted on. And that's consistent with the State Open Public Meetings Act, which also says, even if you don't meet agenda timelines, the action you take in a meeting is still valid. So, that does, legally, that, that does allow you to vote. So, that does, legally, that does allow you to vote on this item tonight.
And then, is my understanding also that the evaluation of the superintendent, and anything having to do with... which the public can weigh in on that, is somewhat limited? I mean, they can certainly contact us, and they, I believe it was known that we were in the process of doing this, and so there was the opportunity to weigh in on any potential outcome. So I don't want the public to think that we were not open to hearing from them, but I also want them to understand the limitations of what we can do in terms of public input in a matter like this. Can you speak to that?
Yeah, no, I think that's correct. This is one of the things that, you know, the superintendent is your employee, and you're entitled to have executive sessions and things to discuss, you know, the more, you know, some of the more confidential personnel matters as you work through, and of course, contract negotiations or something that occur outside of a public forum. The other thing I'd note for you is that while the bar itself didn't go to a committee, you did, you did have the agenda item go through executive committee. We noted in that executive committee meeting that the bar, because of the timing of negotiations and things, probably was going to get posted late. And so you did have a public discussion about that, and there was public notice via the executive committee that this item was, was on your agenda for tonight and coming to the board.
And then my final comment will be, in future, can we do this in such a way where we don't post so late, so it doesn't really seem like we're trying to do something in a less than transparent manner?
Yeah, you certainly, you certainly can, and, you know, we, you can think about how you build out your schedule for action and negotiation next time around.
Thank you very much. All right. If there are no further questions or comments, I now ask Ms. Ritchie for the roll call.
Director Harris? Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. So we're now moving on to our second action item of the evening, and our final action item, but not our final item. And that is the BECS4 learning Phase II, all orders through bid number B06691 and RFP 03662 to Thorneberg, Government, and Troxel for purchase of classroom technology. May I hear from the chairman, Chairperson of Ops? Sorry, may I have a motion? Sorry. Thank you, Teresa.
I move that the school board authorize the superintendent to execute purchase orders through bid number B06691 and RFP 03662 with Thornburg, Apple, B&amp;H Photo Video, CDW, Government, and Troxel, for a total amount of $3,093,676.39 over the 2016-17 fiscal year. Plus, school board briefing slash proposed action report, Washington State sales tax, as detailed in the draft purchase agreements attached to the board action report, with any minor additions, deletions, and modifications deemed necessary by the superintendent, and to take any necessary actions to implement the purchase orders.
I second that motion.
The Operations Committee heard this item on October 20th and moved it forward for approval.
All right. Thank you. Are there any questions or comments about this item?
I'll just reintroduce myself, John Kroll, the new Chief Information Officer, and Colleen Halverson, who is the interim Director of Technology Support Services. Just wanted to remind, remind the board that this is from the BECS4 levy, capital funds directed for the purchase of computers, and that this is also the second round of funds to go towards, towards classroom technology. Forty-nine schools were done in the first round, and this is the second round of 49 schools.
And has anything changed since introduction to this?
No, there are no changes.
No changes, all right. Director Burke?
I want to thank you for, well, first, we're happy to have you here, joining us, and this is our first chance to spend some money with you, in a larger way, or for you to help us spend some money. And so I just wanted to reaffirm some comments that I've made in past, and so my directors will, my colleagues will think I'm a broken record here. But I just want to reemphasize that when we're looking at technology, even if it's just a technology renewal, that we have eyes forward on not just replacing computer with like, or replacing computer with upgrade, but that we're thinking big about the technology role in education, and that we're investing that dollar, each dollar, in something that truly leverages things for our students, and that we're not just looking at something that puts them in front of screens, but things that put them in front of, you know, equipment where they get their hands on. I'm happy to see cameras here, video items. But I think, when I think technology, I also think technology in manufacturing, technology in, you know, I had the chance to visit the skills center and see some of the technology in, like, the nutrition services. So when we think about technology, and we're thinking about renewals, if we can find places where, as we renew, we're pushing forward, and I just want to, I know that we've had this discussion before, but I wanted to share that with you again. Thank you.
Thank you. Noted.
Any other comments, questions? All right, seeing none, Ms. Ritchie, roll call, please.
Director Pinkham?
Aye.
Director Patu?
Aye.
Director Blanford?
Aye.
Director Burke?
Aye.
Director Gary?
Aye.
Director Harris?
Aye.
Director Peters?
Aye.
This motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. So, the board is now going to take a break before the introduction items. So, a 10-minute break, a five-minute break? What are you thinking? 10, a 10-minute break until the, so we'll see you back in, yeah. 10 minutes, all right. 10 minutes it is.